I'd like to open up the open workshop, November 16th, 2017. It is 6:04. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Cruden is here. Trustee Desmond is absent. Trustee Finerney is absent. Trustee Gerelik is absent. Trustee Lhuande is absent. Trustee Munoz is here. Trustee Ryan is here. Vice President Willback is here. President Broderick is -- excuse me. And Trustee Finerney is here.
Hey, but Finerney can --
I know. We --
I'm in the wrong seat.
You're not going to set it up wrong.
You know there's seats.
It's all about raising lips, buddy.
You know there's seats.
They're going to be presenting over there, so you'll be in good shape.
At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to the superintendent for our first set of speakers tonight.
If I could take one minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President. That's right, you were going to go first.
I'd like to -- excuse me? Okay. I was hoping to just make something clear tonight, and I think that I was kind of a little bit misquoted today, or yesterday, I guess, to a statement of saying that it is what it is. And I'd like to go back to that. And I really don't read the paper. I don't go online, but a couple people told me, and they're kind of upset. And I just thought I'd try to be clear about that, that I did speak to the Jersey Journal, and I spoke for about five minutes, if I'm not mistaken. But I got about five seconds of the interview in the paper. What I wanted to say was that regarding the audit, I also meant on to say I was very disappointed by the audit. I didn't think it was -- had any closure to it. I didn't think it gave us really the answers we were looking for. Yeah, at that point, they didn't even respond to us, that they were going to speak to us. I understand now that they are going to come on the, I believe, November 30th meeting, which I'm very happy to hear. But I thought there were mistakes made in the report. I can give an example of just the layoff number was one and other, but we never had a response to any of those things. If you read the headlines, it seemed like there was no problem here. So somewhere we have, I guess, $3 million that I don't know about. I'd like to know where that is. I was at a financial meeting the other night with our CAFRA people and our auditors and our business administrators, and they didn't seem to come up with the same answer that I'm hearing from the audit report. From what I'm understanding is that, at best, from some of our people, if we have a great year and no big problems, that we could actually end up possibly in a plus, $1.2 million, if I'm not mistaken. Now, that being said, that's including layoffs, taxes, you know. So I don't understand how everything was hunky-dory and it was just a couple of mistakes made by an accountant. So I just thought I would get that out there. I mean, we had $3 million. Let's say his $3 million is correct. We saved $3.5 million. The state gave us basically an additional $2.7. There should be money flowing around this place all over the place, but I don't see it. So I just don't understand why, at the same time, at the end of the report, they're saying to us, "Well, you know, it was good that you let these people go, and by the way, you need a monitor." All this, as opposed to we didn't, you know, that was just a minor mistake. I spoke, you know, "Mr. Clark has to go." We're starting negotiations next week. We don't know what we have to spend. That would be an important factor, I think, to find out. Financial changes were made during last year, but I don't know if the auditors ever spoke to the person that they're claiming made all these mistakes. I don't know if that ever happened. I know they never spoke to us, and once we got the report, there was nothing to change on it. It was a final report. It wasn't like we could say, "Well, we don't think those numbers were accurate." Nobody ever spoke to us. So I just kept thinking to myself, "What's going on here?" And then, you know, one of the things, and I could go on and say, for instance, when we first heard about our problem, which evidently the auditors didn't think was a problem, I was told that there was a $2.9, I believe it was $2.9 million mistake that we didn't -- not that it wasn't changed somewhere, it wasn't put in. We sent a check to City Hall regarding that issue of many years ago, where people were talking about $11 million. But I think the final result was we had to pay the city something like $2.9. Maybe, you know, the business office could correct me on that as to exactly what it was. But the understanding I got was that our accountant at the time never put that in. So that'd be a shortage, not that it was in another column. It would be a shortage of $2.9 million. And all of a sudden, we were getting phone calls saying, "We're short, and we've got to fix this thing." Which is what we did exactly when we heard of this. We went right into fixing this problem. You know, finally, I just don't know, you know, anyone that would have thought that I would make a statement just to say that I'm being nonchalant about it and, "Oh, well, I apologize if they think that," but it couldn't be further from the truth. And just thought I'd get that out there. Thank you very much.
President Broderick, just one question.
Yes.
I'm understanding the whole process here. What you're saying to me is that no member of this finance committee was involved in the auditing process?
No.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge.
All right. So the second question would be, was any member of the business department involved in the auditing process? So you were able to sit there and explain certain things?
What they did is, trustees, they called us in individually in different areas. They searched through different accounts, through different line items, through purchase orders, through employee personnel records. And they did it in a separatist sort of way, where we were never in there together. The only time Matt and myself and Laura Zee sat as a group with them was on the exit conference.
In the beginning.
And in the beginning, in the opening entry conference and then the exit conference. And they told us that the report that they were giving us was going to be embargoed. It was not to be shared with anybody, not the superintendent, not trustees. We had to keep it. We could look at it. We could make some comments on it. And to the best of our ability, we commented on the findings that they had. We went back and forth a couple of times, and it's quite funny that President Broderick mentions that $2.9 million that we sent to the city, I believe in December of '15, December '15, I think, we sent the check to the city. We originally had that in our comments to them, and they told us that that had no bearing on it, that we should take that out of our original comments. So we did take it out. And then we fashioned a statement on the four areas of concern that were highlighted in the executive summary of the audit. If you look on the last two pages of the audit itself, it's about a 10-page document, the last two pages is where the business office got to address those four areas of concern. So that's how it happened. It was, we couldn't share it. We were, they said, "You cannot give it out to anybody," and we didn't. And there were things in there that we met and we went over, and we tried to get it as accurate as we could with the knowledge that we had going back to those years of what they looked at. Now, they only looked at a snapshot year. They only looked at July 1 of 215 through June 30 of 216. They did a historical analysis going back of our budgets for a 10-year period, but they didn't dive into details on any of those other years. They only dove into the details, and they were here for almost seven months.
Eight.
They came in in April, and they finished up right around November. So they were here quite often, and, you know, when they asked us questions, if they called us down to get clarification, we gave it to them. Our staff was instructed, "You may not like what they're asking you, but please give them everything that they're asking for. Be transparent with them. Be upfront with them. Don't try to hide anything. That's not going to help anything." And that's how we went through this. But at the very end, when their draft audit came out, it was embargoed. We had to say that we couldn't, we could not share it with anybody. In fact, the only person, and I did call them, that we could, I could make a phone call to, was our current auditors, because there was a question on a late find in one of their areas, and we needed some clarification on it. And then we did speak to them. But other than that, this audit was not shared by their design with anybody outside of Matthew, myself, and Laura Zee, our bookkeeper.
So the next logical question would be, when did President Broderick receive the audit report?
Well, we, what, the finance? At finance, we were allowed to disseminate it on Tuesday. We got it Tuesday, the 14th, and I received it about, it's kind of funny. I received it about 12:30 in the afternoon on this past Tuesday, the final, their final draft. There were people calling me from news outlets who had received it as early as 10:30 in the morning, prior to us getting it.
I had heard that, that other, the newspapers --
Other people got it prior, prior to us getting it. And as soon as I got it, I was driving. It came over my phone. I sent it right over to Dr. Wonko and to President Broderick, so there would be a timestamp on it.
Well, I don't know if this is the point in science meeting, but I know that you, as well as President Broderick, has asked for representatives from the state to come in and explain the audit report, because I've read it, and I'm like, "I'm not really quite sure what you're saying here." Can I have somebody come in and explain it?
If I could jump in now, out of sequence, and perhaps I can answer some of your questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see you.
I have my full report, which I normally would be giving after the presentation.
Okay.
But I would like to just go over some of the sequence, some of the things I saw on the report, and perhaps that will answer your questions before you ask them. I hope. First of all, as Mr. Smith said, as soon as I got that notice, I sent that out to the board. We then presented it to the finance committee. In addition, I asked on that day, the day I received it, if we could get an auditor from the state to come to the board meeting on the 16th tonight to answer questions. I then sent the follow-up, asking, you know, "Could you come then on the 30th?" Because I didn't get a response. I sent another one. I still didn't get a response, but Mr. Smith was in contact with one of the people at the state who said the address that I was responding to, which is the address they sent me the report on, they don't read that email that comes in. So he did confirm that they would have someone here at the November 30th meeting to answer questions. That being said, I would just like to go through a few pages I have, which is not really that many pages. It's 26 font. Just my read on what I interpreted from the audit, and then we'll go back to our normal sequence.
Thank you.
So as you were all aware, this week, the Office of Legislative Services, in conjunction with the Office of the State Auditor, issued a report on their special audit of the 2015-16 school year. Upon first glance, the report may not seem substantial or critical, but after careful contemplation and reflection, I have grave concerns. My greatest concern is the fact that the report indicates that the Commissioner of the Department of Education intends to appoint a state monitor to oversee the fiscal operations of the district. Specifically, the state-appointed monitor would provide direct oversight of the Board of Education's business operations and personnel matters. NJSA 18A:7A-55 specifically notes that the state monitor will oversee the fiscal management and expenditures of school district funds, including, but not limited to, budget reallocations and reductions, approval of purchase orders, budget transfers, and payments of bills and claims. The monitor will also oversee all district staffing, including the ability to hire, promote, and terminate employees, and have authority to override the superintendent's action or a vote by the entire Board of Education on any of the aforementioned matters. This troubles me greatly. The special audit appears to single out the district's independent auditing firm as the primary source of the noted deficiencies. It is clearly our responsibility to maintain the books of record, which properly and accurately reflect the financial transactions that occur throughout the year. The business office must have the ability to record the transactions in a form compliant with the various regulatory agencies, and the business office also has a system of checks and balances, known as internal controls, to continually analyze, monitor, and oversee the reporting of these transactions. We have implemented the initial stage of staffing changes by replacing the accountant, whose responsibility it is to generate and oversee the day-to-day accounting transactions. Additionally, we have hired an outside consultant, Mr. DeLucius here this evening, to assist with the revamping of the business office operations. Phase two is to evaluate the ability of our business office and to adequately oversee and manage our books of records and fiscal operations. In response to the statement in the conclusions section of page two of the report, and this is a quote from that report, "We estimate that the 2017 general fund balance should not be in deficit at fiscal year-end, and corrective measures eliminating 41 staff positions and demoting 10 employees should result in an approximate salary saving of $2.5 million and an additional $860,000 in employee benefit savings for the fiscal year 2018." That's their quote. The Bayonne Board of Education believes that these numbers are incorrect, and the savings for salary will be much higher. When notified of the budget deficit in the fall of 2016, a plan was put in place to reduce the number of personnel without significantly impacting student instruction. The Bayonne Board of Ed agrees that the report is correct in stating that 10 employees were demoted and reassigned. The elimination of the 41 staff positions is the discrepancy that the board has, because we actually eliminated 91 full-time staff positions as follows: 73 teaching positions, seven secretarial positions, 10 custodial positions, and one risk management position. We are committed to take a critical internal look at the structure and staffing of our business office. Effective leadership is essential in assuring we are carving a path to fiscal stability. The citizens of Bayonne, Board of Education, employees, and most importantly, our children deserve no less. That's what I've put together as my encapsulation of the report, and we will discuss in close session any questions that you might have in more detail. I have made sure everyone received a rice notice for tonight, including everyone in the business office, as well as everyone in the central office.
I'd just like to add to your list of discrepancies in the very first sentence. On the first page, the executive summary, where it says fiscal year-end 2015, I believe that to be 2014.
So now, if we could go back into our normal sequence, Mr. Smith will introduce our speakers this evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, this evening, we have our preliminary CAFRA report for the year ending June 30, 2016. We have the representatives from our auditors, our outside auditors, Doniu, Geronda, Doria, and Tompkins. Mr. Mauricio Canto will give us the report. Mauricio?
Good evening, board members. We anticipated the state audit, does everyone hear me?
Yes.
We anticipated the state audit report coming out this fall, and we actually tried to release our CAFRA as soon as possible. It's not in its finished stages, because there's a few items pending. However, we have a draft, and we feel it's important to go over this draft in light of the state audit that was released this week. What our audit is, is a fiscal year '17. Now, the state audit report was actually for fiscal year '16 and talking more about what happened fiscal year '16 in the past. So I think it's really, it's relevant to have what exactly happened in 2017, and there are still some concerns as the auditor, and that's something that I met with the finance committee about, I believe, on Monday.
Tuesday.
To discuss.
Tuesday.
Does everyone have the draft in front of them? What I want to point out is, on page 95, is the C1 of the CAFRA. The CAFRA is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The C-section, actually, the C1, is the Budgetary Comparison Schedule, which basically shows how you did according to your budget. This is based on the state's budgetary accounting system. And here we show what the original budget was when it was adopted, any budget transfers that were done, final budget, how it looks, and then the actual charges to that budget. The good thing that was, in this year, that happened in the past two years, was that there were no over expenditures or appropriations. So that was a finding that we were able to get rid of. Now, what's cause for concern is that last year, you had, at the end of fiscal year '16, you had $5.4 million in fund balance. The state report goes a little bit into how that $5.4 million was classified. They believe it could have been classified differently, but that's fine. But in the end, I'm really concentrating on what the fund balance was, which was $5.4 million, because, and how that's actually allocated or committed to next year's budget, because that was more of the issue that we had last year. And going back to last year, actually, we stated that last year's fund balance of $5.4 million was overcommitted by $2 million.
I'm sorry. I might be on the wrong page.
I apologize. I was actually looking at '17. Let me give you.
You said page 95?
Page 81.
Oh, okay.
Is the last page of the C1 schedule. Here's where you see the fund balance as of July 1, 2016, which was the $5.4 million. And what was of concern was that you had a deficit in operations of $4 million. Now, your fund balance is only $1.2 million. This is of concern, because the state recommends, and we also recommend, it's good fiscal policy, to have at least 2% of your operating budget in fund balance, whether it's, mostly actually in unassigned fund balance. So now, you're at the level where you're not close to that. You have $1.2 million, while 2% of your budget would be approximately $2.5 million. Now, what's of concern is that you have some year-end encumbrances, which will reduce substantially to $144,000. That's a huge reduction from prior years, which shows that spending was cut. And now, your unassigned fund balance is about $1.1 million. Now, this is the, this schedule is on the state's budgetary basis of accounting. This is the part that is of the greatest concern now, is that it was a retropayment. Well, let me go back to the beginning. There was actually contract agreements, labor agreements, that were retroactive for 18 months that were settled during fiscal year '17, but were in the memorandum of agreement, and we stated that they could be paid out in fiscal year '18. Therefore, the district budgeted for this payout in fiscal year '18. Now, the issue as auditors is that this is, your budget's on a state basis. We understand that, and we do this schedule based on that state basis. But on the GAAP basis, which is the generally accepted accounting principles, we have to book that liability. So when we book that liability against the $1.2 million, we have the liability of $3.4 million, which states down there on the reconciliation, it says retroactive salaries and related expenses not deferred on GAAP basis. You actually have --
What page is that? That's, it's still 81?
Yeah.
No. It's not.
Is the sound on?
Yeah, no, that's not the problem. The problem is, I did want to stop you to explain to people what unassigned balance was, because you're being technical. While some of us have been through this with you already, it might be important to explain what that means. The other thing is, the $3.4 million liability, I do not see on page 81.
Okay. Thank you, trustee. Now --
Or 82, or 83.
Rather than just going to, on page 81, on the, it's actually, I believe it's double-sided. Is that double-sided?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't see that line, but I did see it last night. Right here.
So you have the, on the very bottom, where it says reconciliation to government --
I just turned it.
-- fund GAAP. There's the last state aid payment not recognized on GAAP basis. That's always been that matter, manner. And then there's the second line item that says retroactive salaries and related expenses not deferred on GAAP basis.
That's right.
That is actually the $3.4 million, which includes salaries and the payroll tax expense. That's what we refer to as the related costs to the retroactive that go back 18 months. So part of it actually belongs in fiscal year '16. So in GAAP basis, we say this retroactive salaries and wages was for services already performed. Therefore, it should be a liability and expended in the current year. Actually, some of it should have been spent, well, at least reserved somehow, or encumbered or committed somehow in fiscal year '16. But in fiscal year '16, we actually write something, we write a note saying that we cannot determine what the liability is going to be, so we can't actually book anything. So hopefully, well, this is the disclosure I gave the finance committee, is hopefully it's not an issue with the state that we deferred that payment on the budgetary basis, because the state does sign off on the memorandum of agreement for the salary negotiations, and they saw that the payment was deferred to fiscal year '18. And that, and the state does approve your budget, that then include that retroactive pay. However, the state might say to us, "We don't like any differences between the budgetary comparison schedule, except for the last two state aid payments that the governors or predecessor governors put in. However, we're going to, they might ask us to actually restate or reissue our financial statements." So we just wanted to give full disclosure on that before we issue our audit report.
Which, again, they did approve.
Correct. So based on those calculations, I want to address on page nine, our opinion. Now, as auditors were giving an opinion about whether financial statements are materially, are fairly stated, means there's no material statements that we know of. Also, we are obliged to actually give a going, we actually give an opinion, making sure that there's no going concern. If there, we have to look at the finances of the district, and if there's anything to report, we actually have to modify our opinion and sometimes state that there's a going concern. In essence, a going concern is that you're having financial difficulties. With the state of New Jersey, school districts do not declare bankruptcy. Therefore, we never really have to put in our opinion that there's a going concern. However, there is a tool that we call an emphasis of matter, which is something that we use in fiscal year '16, which is bring it to the attention of everyone that there's an issue. In fiscal year '16, we actually had an emphasis of matter that said your fund balance was overcommitted to next year's budget by $2 million. This sounded off a lot of alarms, and as the auditors were very, we feel that it couldn't have been any other way, and actually, we feel that if we hadn't sounded off those alarms and discussed the fiscal state of the school district, that a lot of the austerity or the cuts that were made wouldn't have been done, and fiscal year '17 wouldn't have been in a lot worse shape. So even with that given, that a lot was done during 2017, we only gave our opinion last year around the same time, and you're already six months with, six months into fiscal year '17. Therefore, the cuts might not have had much of an effect. But either way, fiscal year '17, I want to present now. We still have the emphasis of matter, and it's actually a little bit worse than it was last year. And this is why we had to sit down with the -- And this is why we had to sit down with the administration and make a ton of inquiries and discuss the budget with them, just to make sure that the financial difficulties aren't as bad as what we were seeing. But we still put it in, we're still putting an emphasis of matter in our report. The emphasis of matter says, as described in note sixteen of June thirty of two thousand seventeen, the district's fund balance deficit in the GAAP fund statements of a deficit of seven, seven point eight million dollars is two million dollars, two point three million dollars more than the last two state aid payments totaling five point five million, indicating the district is facing financial difficulties. Our opinion is not modified with respect to this matter. The, it's a bit technical, but it's using the verbiage that the state uses, it understands, is they have your budgetary basis, and they say, you always have a deficit in your budgetary basis because of the last two state aid payments. However, your budget should always be bigger than those, your deficit can never be bigger than those last two state aid payments. This time, your fund balance, your deficit in your fund balance is not greater than those last two state aid payments, so you have, you have an issue. We're using the word, it indicates financial difficulties. It doesn't necessarily state that you are. It's just, it's all sounding the alarm once again, saying that it does appear that you, that there, experience, there's fiscal, you're in fiscal straits.
Are you prepared to say why we have those? I mean, in what areas are we deficient? I mean, we know we have a salary fund. Where, how are you coming up with, like, we're almost like two point, it's two thousand seventeen, I'm like almost two point something million dollars less than what we had last year. In what areas are we deficient? Where are we spending the money that we perhaps should not be spending it? Where is this happening?
Well, that's something for the administration to answer. I mean, we just report budget, what you had in your budget and what was actually spent against it, and show what the outcome is at the end. The outcome at the end was, you spent, the school district spent four million dollars more in expenses than they had in revenue. So your fund balance went down four million dollars. Then you add to that on the GAAP basis, that three point four million dollars in retroactive pay. That's where I feel that it's an indicator they have financial difficulties.
So as auditors, you don't really tell us, tell the finance, tell the business where you're falling short, just to give a total shortfall without an analysis of where the shortfall is coming? What areas? Is it in instruction? Is it in health insurance? Is it, where is it? Do you know? You're not, you're telling me you are not in a position to say where?
It's looking into the big picture is how, which, what your question really is, how did you come up with your budget? Because your, your tax levy, how much fund balance are you going to use in your budget, all that comes into play based on what your budget is. So you have to ask the question, why, why did you spend more than you had in your budget? Is the question. So that's really something for the administration of how did you come up with this budget, and why didn't things go according to plan? Actually, they did anticipate using the, some of the fund balance in their budget, but this is really, I apologize, it's really a question for the administration. I'm just telling you how we look at it in a big picture perspective, and we do ask those questions.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Question. And it may be unfair for you guys, but you read the state audit, the report of sorts that we got, which says we are not experiencing financial difficulties, which I think is a prelude to we get no more money next year. But do you, would, would you at all try to make a comparison between what you're saying and what you think they mean?
I would say that in the state's report, they say you do have a fund balance, and we could have classified things differently and not had a deficit in unassigned fund balance, which is one of the classifications. However, perhaps the same thing would have happened last year that's happening now with their state report, where everyone thinks everything's all right. But things weren't all right at all, and that's why we felt it was important to present this fiscal year seventeen audit immediately.
And I had asked you a question Tuesday night, and I'm going to ask again. Is there anything from, oops, is there anything from prior years that is a carryover problem that is still haunting us in your report now?
Some of the questions we had during the finance committee meeting is if you're caught up on retro pay with labor contract settlements. And it basically appeared that you were caught up to the current fiscal year, but I haven't audited that, and that's something that your administration has to answer. But those were, those were basically the questions. Now, I wanted to discuss a little bit more of what happened in that finance committee meeting, was that we were explained that you did have a three million dollar increase in state aid. Thank God for that. And it looks like you, with the cuts you did, that are going to be, that are going to be applicable to the entire fiscal year eighteen
Right.
Because it was only applicable to a portion of fiscal year seventeen, that you should not be in any financial difficulties by the end of fiscal year eighteen. But that's something more for the administration to explain. All we did, we do not audit that. We're not giving really any opinion on that. We're just, we just have to see if there's any going concerns that we should know about.
Thank you.
Question, Michael.
Do you want me to speak on that?
Would you like the, should we, do you have any questions as the administration or the board trustees?
Yeah, I'd like to add something. I mean, my understanding is the fact that the depletion in pay for some of our employees, as well as the elimination and deletion of some of the positions, enables us to at least go after or the deficit. But what people don't seem to understand is that these cuts and setbacks were taken in April. And what a lot of people don't realize is it's going to take at least twelve months in order for these to kick in to make our budget a little bit more manageable. And with the new superintendent, we've been addressing that. And my hope is the fact that as we go into the school year, the end of this school year, that deficit will decrease.
With all due respect, we've been addressing it from the moment we found out, which is before he even got here, and he supported us in some of the decisions we've made, and we are still being vigilant. That's the truth. But we started as soon as we found out, which was this time last year.
I even believe that, on to what trustee Wilbeck said, that
It was a Friday after Thanksgiving.
At the Tuesday night meeting, I asked a question of, has any of the, like, in the last four or five years, has there been any decreases or anything done? And I think the answer was no. So this board here, once we heard about the problem, made changes. And they were difficult changes and hurt a lot of people, but they were things that had to be done. But, you know, I don't understand then how we would make all these changes and do all these things in order to come in and say, no, there was no problem at all.
It's hard to imagine after eight months. They get the dates wrong, they get the amounts wrong, they make no Then everything, anything with the numbers close to wrong. And they make no, they, there's no dialogue as to what I think is one transaction that really is paramount in the whole scenario that put us in the pickle we're in. And here's the, can I say what I think? Let me clear this first.
Oh, you call this a sidebar?
Sidebar?
Can I ask a question while we're waiting on that?
Sure, trustee.
Can you make hazard, again, hazard a statement as to whether comparing last year's CAFRA to the current CAFRA, presenting, are we in a better overall position?
The issue is, when you look at these individually, without seeing what the future outcome is, it could be deceptive. And I feel that that's perhaps what happened with this fiscal year sixteen. Things could have looked better. However, we knew that by looking at the numbers, your fund balance and your spending trends, that it was going to be a lot worse, and that's why we sounded alarms at the finance committee meetings and at the board meetings with our, with the presentation of our report. Then when you look at this year's audit, if you look at it individually, it looks horrible. It looks like you had a very, you have a deficit in your fund balance on the GAAP basis. However, because of the continuing trend into fiscal year eighteen, you're actually in a lot better position than you were at the end of fiscal year sixteen. So that's why you have to look at these, the trend, and you have to look at everything in the big picture.
Trending better.
You're trending a lot better, yes. And your state aid has increased, and your expenditures are in line with what you budgeted. So things are, to the auditor, is making sense in fiscal year eighteen.
The effects of which, there's always a year later to be able to go backwards and see what you've accomplished. But the thing that I think I had hoped to see in this audit was the miscalculation, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but the miscalculation by the former accountant, the contract negotiations at that time, and probably Mr. Clark might want to correct me on the numbers, because I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. But if, in essence, there was a zero in year one, that zero became an actual number and should have been compounded out for five years, and he did not calculate that in. If you look at page ninety-five in the CAFRA report of last year, you will see in one line item that basically twelve million was budgeted and twenty million paid out. So that's the concern I have about what are we recovering from? Because that was not a correctly budgeted number. We committed to it, and I say we, and I speak at this point of a former grouping, but, you know, we take responsibility. We are here, and this is our job. So I don't fault anybody in particular, because I wasn't there, but I believe that one transaction set everybody into a tailspin, because it was not properly compounded out. Mr. Clark, am I wrong?
Yeah.
Yeah, I am?
No, no. The calculation.
And that was the last, that was the last time there was a city hall involvement with negotiations. And, you know, I've served on appointed boards and now elected board, and I mean only school board. I've been in both scenarios, and even had the benefit of being selected by my colleagues to serve for a few months in between. There is a process during budget process conversations that don't occur the same way now, and that is when you are on appointed board, you can actually sit with the mayor and their finance people, and two council representatives, and you speak about what you need to be able to run the district well. You discuss how it's going to impact taxes. There's a dialogue. And during some of those dialogues in previous years, there was a mandate, basically, for a zero tax increase. Now, none of us wanted to raise taxes, and part of the problem with trying to accommodate a budget that is filled with mandates that don't come with money and all kinds of stuff, is there's two ways to get money. One is, you get the money that's already paid in taxes, sent back to you to run the district, and we don't get enough of that back. Your other option is to add new taxes on top of it, which is exactly what this board fights, doesn't want to do. So all those things compound the problem, and this doesn't, as you know, you read it too, it's almost comic book material, it does not tell anybody anything. It's a disappointment. No. I wrote all over it, it doesn't make any sense.
That's why they're coming on the third?
Well, can't wait. Can't wait.
Any more questions?
No.
Well, I still
Thank you.
Welcome. I still recommend that the board do discuss with the administration and the finance department as far as how things look in fiscal year eighteen. We did plenty of that during the finance committee meeting and gave us some level of comfort. However, we still have to keep the report as it is with the indicator stating that there's an indication that there are financial difficulties. But like we said, that the trends do seem to appear that you're going to be in a better position at the end of fiscal year eighteen.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the superintendent, and depending on how much time we have available, possibly we could start some of our resolutions. But I'll turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Mader. Good evening, everyone. On November first, we opened five new full-day tuition-free kindergarten classes after receiving a substantial preschool education expansion aid grant for this school year. The new classes are at Henry Harris School, Philip G. Vroom School, Lincoln Community School, Midtown Community School, and Washington Community School. Each provide a high-quality preschool experience led by a New Jersey certified teacher, and we follow the approved scope and sequence. I would like to extend, at this time, a special thanks to Mr. Michael Kubert and his staff for preparation of the rooms in such a short period of time. It has been a very busy as well as productive month in the area of curriculum and instruction. Our curriculum consultant, Mr. Coleman, was in district to review the humanities curriculum, social studies and English, language arts, and he stated they look strong overall. We are happy about that, because as you know, we have Q-SAC this year. Also, we continue to recognize our veterans with our Field of Heroes ceremonies that were held, and the essay contest. In the area of assessment, we're working diligently to prepare for the upload of information for PARC, Fall, Spring, and New Jersey Student Learning Assessment and Science. Additionally, we received the medium score for student growth percentiles for our teachers. Just as a reminder, the SGP's count for thirty percent of the teacher's final summative score. Our principals will be conducting face-to-face meetings with eligible teachers to review their scores. Additionally, we had a very productive and successful second-half training session and development day. Dr. Degnan will now give us further insights into these items, as well as some others.
Yes, again, thank you, Dr. Wongso, and good evening, trustees. Just to talk first about Achieve New Jersey. Achieve New Jersey is the teacher and principal evaluation system. I just wanted to remind the trustees that you need to have multiple measures to review a principal or teacher. The multiple measures are, for teachers, are observation process, where they go in and we look at the scoring. But we also have something called student growth percentiles. Student growth percentiles looks at the teachers in grades four to eight, and its history of the students on the PARC exam. In the past, that was ten percent. Just as Dr. Wongso said, it's now thirty percent. Thirty percent of the teachers' evaluation is based on how well those students do sitting in front of them on the PARC exam. We do have that information now, and just informing the board that our principals will be meeting with our teachers to discuss. So there's twenty percent of the teachers in the district left in June without a score right now, opposed to receiving them in the coming weeks. Also, directors and principals put together a quality workshop that focused on a variety of topics for staff training and development day. And looking at our content areas, highlights included visual and performing arts. They attended the sculpture garden. New areas of science, we continued our partnership with Stevens Institute of Technology, and also the New Jersey Public School Administrators Association, looking at professional learning communities and next-generation science standards, as well as differentiated instruction. We had David Nash, who is an attorney, he's an expert in school law, to come in and work with our nurses on different guidelines. You had approved Dr. Deborah Ives from Montclair State University, and she worked with our math teachers. And we also had training for our counselors with respect to writing essays and resumes. But one of the highlights of the day was our technology conference that we had for over one hundred and twenty teachers at ours, man, school. And the conference was an open forum workshop where the faculty selected courses they wanted to attend. So the goal was to go over to the building, ours, man. They were, the rules were, if the course was open, you could go in, have a seat. If it's something that you enjoyed, you stayed. If not, you could move on to the next one. We had Kiter Learning, we had TEQ Smart Word Training, we had Origami and STEM, we had using Google Earth to explore the world, and we had how to create interactive jeopardy. So the technology So the technology conference was a big hit. Some of the comments were, use this organizational template from today and apply it across the board to other content areas. So we were excited about that little pilot that we had at Horace Mann, and we think there was a lot of collaboration with our teachers on that. We do get feedback from our staff after the workshops are over, and then now we're looking forward to working in our final day in March. And that's all I have.
One quick question, Dr. Degnan.
Sure.
On the SGP, student growth percentage.
Correct.
With the SGOs, do you take into consideration, like, there are some teachers who are teaching port-of-entry students, they're teaching at-risk students. So obviously, their percentage of growth might not be as high as, say, someone who's teaching an AP honors class or, you know, higher achieving. How do you make up for that difference?
So that was my fear when this first came out, was what's hidden in Achieve New Jersey is this is true competition of students in your classroom with other students in the state. So what you have to do as teachers, I have, if I'm teaching you, you have to do better than everybody with the same testing history throughout the state. And then trustee Desmond would have to do better than every student that had the same testing history in the state. So where you find the concerns is you're right.
Generally, they struggle.
The at-risk students, and then you find it, I'll tell you, you find it also on the other end, on the GNT. Because you would expect gifted and talented students to do well. We're looking at growth. We're not looking at demographics here. We're looking at how the students that are sitting in front of you do compared to their peers. So if you have an unmotivated child that scores low on the PARC and he's on a score for 199, your SGP would be a 21. What we look for in MSGPs is between 35 and 65. That's typical growth. 45 and 50 would give you a three, 45 and 55 would give you a three. So my concern is with our special needs, they are working with some of the toughest populations, and they're getting very, their scores are going to come back low.
Dr. Degnan, just for the benefit of the board, when you say it will give you with three, I don't know if the board members know if Mr. Ryan or Mrs. Cruden or trustee, trustee Ryan, do you know what a three means?
Right, so the rule break is 4-3-2-1. So if you're doing an observation, you can score as high as four or as low as a one. With an SGO, which is a student growth objective, which is a measure, that 80% of our teachers, it would be 4-3-2-1, and with the SGP would be 4-3-2-1, and then what if they have percentage? 55% is for the observation, the actual administrator sitting in your room, and then they have the 30% for the SGP. So you would hope then that a teacher in that area that you're talking about has a higher observation score.
What about the other 58%? You said 55.
An SGO. So you have, every teacher has to do two. This is also for the administrators also, that the principals are part of this. So the principal receives the SGP score of every student in their school, whereas the teacher gets everyone in the class.
It's one of those we're all in this together type of thing.
Yes.
I remember back when I was a vice principal, if the teachers didn't do well, Joe Broderick didn't do well. So, and if Joe Broderick didn't do well, Mr. Baccarella didn't do well. So it kind of just continually grows. So it's a good concept as far as we're all in this together type of thing. So it's in my best interest to make sure that every teacher in my house did well, you know, at that time.
However, I'm going to use this to segue into something, a conversation I started with, I just started now, trustee Finnerty, and I brought up to both Dr. Degnan and Mr. Broderick. I'm concerned because there are some schools, Robinson being one of them, with huge populations of students that have some other language other than English as their primary language still. Now, in hospital, sorry, switching gears, in the high school, we had the program, the port-of-entry, I'll call it a program, I don't know what to call it, but I don't think it filters down the same way into the elementary schools. We do things in the upper grades to accommodate students sometimes that I think we should be doing from the time they enter our school system, whatever grade that is, when people are coming and families coming in from other countries and they're struggling with the language. How can they be tested on, in some of these testing situations and be expected to do well at all when they still don't understand the language, let alone what that language is trying to convey to them? So, anyway, you can't answer that now, but I'd like to see us do something going forward to make sure we do for the younger children what we do for the older children with the port-of-entry, and I'll call it a program.
E-S-E-I, E-S-S-A. The English learners is big now with the monitoring and the testing of those students. And we do an access test, so they are going to put a big thrust in ensuring, like you said, that those students are getting English language services.
But when people, students come into, let's say, a third-grade classroom and have absolutely close to zero ability to speak and understand English, they, is it appropriate to throw them into a third-grade classroom and not, and then not really try to, maybe they don't belong there yet, maybe there's something, some remedial stuff that needs to be done, and you start bridging that gap till they actually can function there and function well? I worry about students feeling, start judging themselves when they can't compete with their peers, whether it's academically or the rest, when they're in a different niche. What's that state mandated, Dr. Degnan? It's a state mandated test. It's not something that we can design ourselves.
The PARC test and the, we did, the access, the access, the state.
It just, it follows.
But there is a protection for students that come in after July 1st that are in first year in school that would be exempt from like ELX portions because they don't know, it's an English test. So that, but however, here's the problem, in high school, if it's a graduation requirement, they are not. So, yeah, that's trustee Desmond. I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Degnan. In keeping with the mission to prepare students to be college and career-ready, the Bayonne Board of Ed held its second annual job fair this past Tuesday. Now going to turn it over to Mr. Copaz, who will explain how successful the fair was. Mr. Copaz?
Thank you, Superintendent. As Dr. Wonko just stated, we had a very successful career and job expo at the Rich Club, the ice rink, this past Tuesday. I want to thank some of our trustees. We did have finance meeting, President Broderick came down, so we do appreciate your attendance. We did have over 200 members of the public who attended. We had 40 vendors, some of the vendors, just to name a few, New York Life Insurance, Barnabas Health, U.S. Navy, Bayonne Fire Department, Pennsylvania State Police Department, Camp Point, and the BCB Bank. And we will be planning for another job and career expo for the spring, which will be focusing on our juniors and seniors. As soon as I get that date scheduled, hopefully before the new year, we'll get that date out. If you have any suggestions of how we can bring more of our juniors and seniors to the event, that is definitely going to be a conversation that we're going to be working on. We've also had some suggestions from the vendors. They would like to be, to come into the school, maybe during lunchtime where they could set up a vendor table. You know, there was some Hudson Pool management, they hire life coaches for the summer, they're looking for juniors and seniors. They asked if they could come in and sit and set up a table during lunch and then give out applications and, you know, have those conversations with students because they are actively seeking, you know, students of that age to work in the summer. So this is something that we are going to continue to work on, and, you know, we've had two great events so far, and we're looking forward to another one this spring. And I'd like to thank President Broderick and the board for bringing this suggestion to us. We've partnered up with the Hudson County One Stop, who does a fantastic job and works with our kind, Mr. Parker, to make sure that, you know, everything is smooth. It really was a nice event. Thank you so much.
Well done, by the way, all of you.
You all recall the extended feeding program that kept being pushed back because of the natural disasters. I'm happy to say we've finally started the program. We have it at Woodrow and Washington schools, and right now, we're feeding 138 of our most needy students. They are receiving food items that they're taking home for the weekend, and they'll also be taking home for the breaks. We're investigating different possibilities now to expand that program, so we're happy we finally got that off the ground. Mr. Smith will now share some information regarding a recent bus accident that occurred.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Wonko. Dr. Wonko, in regards to the food program, I've been alerted by Vanessa Detto, our assistant director, that she's going to reach out to schools two and four and get the program up and running in those schools in the very, probably start that paperwork next week. So we'll have even more of our students who are SNAP eligible, they come off of our master eligibility list, supplemental nutritional aid for those students, they eat, and they'll get those, take those food packs home on the weekend. I received an email from Kerry Bringeerson, a teacher of social studies, and on October 20th, there was a field trip with some 35 students with Mr. Bringeerson and Mr. Gene Woods. They were traveling out of district and going over the Casiano Bridge, and our bus was involved in an accident. But I would just like to read to you what Mr. Bringeerson wrote to me. Regarding Rene Umana, he is the bus driver. I'm certain that Rene's skill as a bus driver and his quick reactions made for a much healthier ending to an event that could have been tragic. Gene Woods and I were sitting directly behind the driver, Rene, when a large box truck swerved into us from the outside lane on the Casiano Bridge. For those of you unfamiliar with that term, that is the name of the turnpike bridge. The truck did not slow down and could easily have pushed us into the guardrail or worse. Rene slowed and turned the bus wheel with precision and perfect control to minimize the impact and somehow managed to take the brunt of that impact on the front corner of the bus as opposed to somewhere in the middle. All of this was done while he was able to avoid being rear-ended because of the control braking as opposed to slamming on his brakes and crashing into the guardrail of the bridge. Rene's first and last words to us that day were, "Is everybody all right?" I'm thrilled with the professionalism demonstrated by Rene Umana, considering how traumatic the event must have been for him as well of us, as well of us. Now, this happened mid-span, ladies and gentlemen. And it could have really turned tragic or even deadly, but due to him, so with your okay, I would like to get Rene a little token, we've done this in the past, as you remember, with Bill Farrington, when the child was being bit by the dog on 20th Street. So I will get a gift card from the board members. I'll have you sign the card and we'll give it to Rene as a token of our esteem. And that's all I have, Dr. Wonko.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions. If not, Dr. Maida?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll ask you to turn to your agendas. I'll start with communications. You'll see a list of resignations and retirements, which were sent home to you. I added two other communications from Paul Barron, the manager of the office of the state auditor, and also from Mayor James Davis. And both communications have to do with the state audit. I'd like to ask the trustees if there's any more conversations about the audit. We would do them out here and not inside, so if we're done with any discussions about the audit, I'll continue with the agenda.
No, we're just confirming that we will have a representative here on November 30th for questions.
As per the email to the superintendent.
Email confirmation.
Okay, that's the only question.
Okay, so no more discussions about audit, I'll move along. Okay, so I'll ask you to turn. Since we haven't had any committee meetings, I'll go through the items that were sent I'd like to point out on A1, that's the approval of our organization meeting for our reorg meeting. I'd like to remind the board, it is Thursday, January 4th, at 7:30 PM is the actual public meeting for the reorg. We will have an open workshop at 5:00 PM. We will be swearing in our two new trustees, and we have a list of items to go over before we get to the public meeting. Then items A2 all the way to A9 are all staff to attend workshops. I would just like to point out to the board on A2, this actually is being held the day of our board meeting on November 30th. So I'd just like to get the boards okay with that. Normally, we don't like to have a resolution after our board meeting, before our board meeting. So that'll take us all the way to A10, and we have contracts for staff development workshops, social study teachers on December 7th. A11 is for grade seven, eight, and Algebra I teachers.
I'm sorry.
A12 is for Bayonne High School dance teachers. A13 is Next Generation Science Standards for grade five. This is a full-day workshop with Stevens Institute. A14, now, I'd also like to point out with this one, this is with KICER learning instructional technology. This was originally scheduled for December, but they made the change, so this was already happened.
This was by TechCom.
Yeah. And it was paid by Title II funds, and the only reason you're not seeing this was because the last-minute change from them. A15 is with JVS Metro West. They're performing a short-term vocational evaluation on a classified student. Then we have a group of field trips from A16 to A19.
Is this the time to ask a question about this, Dr. Maida?
Sure.
I know that in the past that we have had issues regarding field trips, in particular, resolution A18, it says travel club. I wasn't aware that we had a travel club.
I'll administer. We haven't in a past. Tina Cisai, who's a teacher, she went to Mr. Baccarella, filled out the paperwork to develop a charter. This trip would be for next year, but due to the pay, she wanted to approve the resolution. We did ask her, this would be during teachers convention next year, so it would not be on school days. It'll be open to any member who is part of the travel club, and she'll start promoting that as soon as we, if we do approve that on 30th.
I guess what I have, yeah, well, the question, yeah, I understand that. And, Dr. Copaz specified, a student has to be a member of the travel club. We have come into a couple of problems that when the bus can't be filled, generally, the past practice has been that the trip would be open to anybody who could pay for the seat and they could go on the trip. I just want to make sure that anyone who goes on the trip is indeed a member of the travel club, and that's 2018, so that's a year from now, and I probably won't even be here then. However, on A19, 12 drama students, it just says school grade, Bayonne High School. I really think that we have to be a little bit more specific. Bayonne High School, I mean, I do believe that the student should be enrolled in a drama class, and it needs to be monitored. Because we denied a trip because students were not in certain courses, and that trip was denied. I'm not liking the Bay, I don't like the Bayonne High School thing. I think it should be drama, drama students or, because it is a drama.
It's right below that, we have the 12 drama students attached, and two teachers are obviously the drama.
It's completely opposite of what. Yeah, but where it says school grade? On the resolution?
High school. High school.
It just says high school, it's too broad for me.
You wanted to say music.
It should be school grade.
We'll be more specific.
It can't just be, it can't just be a Bayonne High School student.
That's in the drama students.
But I don't care if they're nine, 10, 11, or 12, but they're in drama.
No, 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 it just, it doesn't make any difference what grade they're in, they have to be in a drama class.
It says that.
That's what it says.
Yeah, but it doesn't say it right here.
In the same sentence?
I want to change. Because we ran into a problem with this.
We know what's going on with this, and he's retiring, we don't have to make that up again. up again.
I would, I would.
I need a cup of coffee.
I would like on some of the resolutions, just, I mean, and mind you, if it can't be done, I'm not freaking out. I just want to know.
Such a troublemaker.
We each senior class trips to Stratton, Vermont, which is awesome, but where are they going? Like, I'm just curious, just for, frame of reference, same thing with the travel club, it says they're going to Boston and Salem.
Yeah, we have the agenda in the back.
Yeah, I mean, just maybe for future, where they're going in Boston, that would be great.
Make sure they're in your final package.
Yeah, awesome.
I have them on the original resolution.
Why do you care?
Oh, no, I'd like to know where they're going. I think that's interesting.
Not a problem.
Apparently not, right?
No, it's none of your business. If they're going to Salem, you can bet, you can bet it was one of my relatives that was burned up there.
I will take care of that.
Five-minute break.
A20, A20 is our Algebra I refresher course.
Is that for today?
Yes. Okay.
Just saying, I will be holding the park in the fall. We traditionally do it in spring, this is for our algebra students, it's in the fall.
Oh, yeah.
It's the January.
Dr. Dagnan.
I think that's winter.
In regards to testing, the, I think it was 20 or 30 students that sat for the park during the summer program.
Yeah.
Did we receive any type of notification as far as like, did any pass? How successful they were? I mean, is it too early for that or?
I believe we have that, but I can get that out too and check that.
Okay. Thank you.
Tell this one side.
The last resolution is A21, it's a contract with New Jersey Specialized Child Study Team. This is to assist us in an educational, psychological, speech, language evaluation for a student. So that completes A. I'll move on to finance. We'll start with B1, which is our money received. B3 is a draft of our claims and accounts. B4 is one handicap placement of one student, ASR, to Mercer County. B5 is a cancellation of transportation contracts.
What happens?
The cancellation is because we don't have the.
Yes, which is in the language of the resolution. B6 is an emergency transportation. We have a special ed student for Horizon School.
I have a question.
Sure.
Did we ever look into the buses and if we could get a car? Because I remember, that question, I'll miss this for a long time.
We put together a whole spreadsheet that was given out, not at this past finance committee meeting, but at the previous finance committee meeting.
Just an example why it doesn't work sometimes is because you get cancellations in addition to getting.
It's, they're moving targets.
I can get you a copy of that. I thought I sent it home to you when, I don't think you made that meeting, trustee Lawanda, but I can certainly get it home to you, okay? To show you the different costs.
Mother superior.
B7, the resolution where we cut both December checks on one date, a tradition that we've always had. And B8 is an emergency professional contract if needed for snow removal.
Okay, so trustee Lawandy and I had a question about that. You know, there's, there's, there's no rates, there are letters attached that basically, you know, says this is our scheduled rate, there's nothing on there. And how many times did we use this service last year? I mean, how much did the snow, the snow actually?
We didn't use it. Anytime it gets more than four or five inches, our equipment cannot handle it. And if you do remember last year where other schools in Hudson County were out two and three days, we were out one day. So it really did help us. We only go to it, I can get you the rate sheet, they did provide that, it's quite similar. And we only use them on a, as need basis, there's no upfront money with them. If they come in, they charge us their hourly rate plus their equipment rate.
And this goes out to big, like everything else, right?
Yeah, this, they have state contracts as well, so we can utilize them without, without going out.
So Mr. Smith, before next meeting, we'll have the hourly rate?
I'll bring it to the, yeah, I'll send it home to you.
Okay, thank you.
B9 is our comprehensive maintenance plan resolution. B10, we had a lease purchase bid on October 31st, and these are the results, there'll be a resolution to follow, but on the second sheet, you'll see the bid results between US Bancor and TD Equipment Finance. This was the Chromebook financing.
It was the Chromebook and the network upgrades. And on those network upgrades, we're getting back about, what is it, about 75% now?
Yes.
About 75% of our expenses coming back to us through USAC, so we're happy about that rate.
B11, we're accepting ESEA and NoTow Left Behind, the grant for 2016 and 17 carryover.
Yeah.
And then approval to accept the PSE and G Foundation grant for $5,000, which you'll see on a resolution coming up.
Thank you. My bill's certainly high enough, they can afford it.
Okay, so that's it for finance. I'll move on to what I have for personnel, which is starting with C5. We're adding people to Literally Boost, a 100-book challenge. B6 is additional personnel to curriculum writing. B7 is additional people as facilitators to the Professional Learning Community Project. Eight is personnel to academic reading and math support. Nine was personnel to ESSA Consolidated Formula Subgrant. And then C10 is additional PLC members.
Okay, okay.
And then C10 is advisors to the robotic work, which is the grant, the grant that we just previously did on finance.
This is getting the staff with the grant.
I have one item that's going to be on non-consent that I have so far. Last few months, we've talked about the 9th Street property, so this is a resolution on whether or not the board will go out to bid to put it out there for sale. Okay? So trustee, is that all I have, if you're out here?
Um, no.
Good, you can go on to the next meeting and then you go on.
Okay, so forget, I'll reserve my question for later.
Any other business for the board outside? Not hearing any. We'll adjourn to a closed session.
Where's Kenny's report? That's not this, this meeting?
Which report?
Where's the hit, the hit report?
Oh, they, they just want to.
All right, that's the 30th, all right. All right, I was like, we can't end a meeting without Kenny reporting.
We're going to adjourn to a closed session. Legal personnel negotiation items, it is 7:22. The board will not return.
I thought Kenny was.